I'm going to call to order pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District One and the Board of Educational Services Unit Number 19 will be held on Thursday, July 17, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes. The public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before I hand it over to Ms. Snipes, I just got to say I love having the little voices in the room saying the Pledge of Allegiance with us. It was very special. Now, Vice President Snipes will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement, which you can see on the top of your agenda.
Thank you, President Erdnberger. The vision, every student, every day, prepared for success, and the mission to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Almanza.
Present.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Full.
Here.
Holman. Krackey.
Here.
Magnusson.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipes.
Here.
Tealyn.
Here.
Ait, present.
Thank you, Dr. McFarland. I did not hear from Dr. Holman, although you're welcome to make a motion to excuse her absence, but I did not hear from her.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Smith and seconded by Ms. Snipes. Roll call, please.
Krackey.
Aye.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
No.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
No.
Full.
No.
Five ayes.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. We'll move on to Board and Superintendent Communications, starting with our Superintendent, Mr. Ray.
President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the Board, and our community here tonight. I want to take a moment to speak about recent enforcement actions that have taken place in our city and the concerns and emotions that many are feeling, especially as they relate to our students, staff, and our families. I recognize that this has been a time of uncertainty and anxiety for some in our community. Families are navigating complex and often difficult circumstances. As educators, our role is to ensure that every student feels safe, supported, and valued in our schools. I don't pretend to have all the answers. These are complicated issues with real human impact. I do know this, silence can be mistaken for indifference. If my lack of public comment has caused concern, I hear that. That is not my intent. I believe my role is to stay grounded, be present, and focused on real solutions that support our students and families. We have been planning for such events or similar events since 2017, when the Board approved the current Board resolutions. Last week, they became real events in our community. As in 2017 and last week, my commitment, our district's commitment, is to create a learning environment where all students can focus on being kids, learning, growing, and being part of a caring school community. That includes responding with care and discretion when students, when events beyond our walls affect those within them. Last week, we worked with designated staff and community partners to provide a reminder of our established protocols. We also shared an update with Next Level Learning Families, summer school. Over the last week, we have been to schools, worked with community organizations, visited specific family locations, answered questions from staff, students, and families. We have been and always will be focused on our core work, our students. I'm aware that there are a lot of limitations of what our school district can control when these types of solutions occur in our community. However, what we can control is how we respond. We respond in a calm, caring, intentional, and meaningful way. We will always be here for our students and staff. We will continue to focus on what matters most, helping every student succeed, no matter their background or their circumstances. Our staff has done this for 170-plus years, and we will continue doing it for the days, weeks, months, and years to come. Thank you, and thank you for the staff that showed up here tonight to share your input and your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Ray. We'll move on to Board Member Comments. Ms. Almanza.
Thank you, President Erdnberger. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge what happened last week and may still be happening in our community regarding the immigration enforcement actions. We know that the Omaha Public Schools community, our students, families, our staff, and our community in general are understandably concerned, and we want to remind everyone of what we stand for as a nation. The United States Constitution ensures that public schools are obligated to educate all children regardless of their immigration status. At the state level, the Nebraska State Education Association strongly advocates for school communities to be safe zones, welcoming and protective of all families. Locally, and Superintendent Matt mentioned, Omaha Public Schools adopted a resolution for immigration in 2017. That resolution makes it clear, it is not the mission of OPS to enforce federal immigration laws. OPS believes that it is in the interest of the students, staff, and families and communities that it takes an action to ensure all students and families that are disrupted by ICE may... Let me start again. OPS believes that it is in the interest of students, staff, families, and communities that it takes actions to assure all students and families that disruptions to the educational environment that ICE actions may create shall not be tolerated. And any ICE personnel wishing to enter any district property shall first notify the Superintendent and District General Counsel. I know my fellow Board members and our district leadership have been thinking about this. Now, on a personal level, and as a member of this community, taxpayer, mother, and an immigrant who now has the privilege of being a U.S. citizen, I carry lived experiences with me, memories of previous raids that carried fear, uncertainty, and the weight that immigration status can place on families and whole communities. I believe firmly and unapologetically that every person is human first, deserving of dignity, safety, and the opportunity to learn, live, and thrive. What these community raids may mean for our students are increased absences, drops in academic performances, and growth and disengagement from families and the community in general. Those who no longer may feel safe in the space where they should call, they should feel protected, our students, and it might mean students carrying food and clothing to schools in their backpacks because something may happen. This is not okay. I want to be very clear, nobody deserves to live in fear, especially not our children. To every student, every parent, every OPS staff member, and every community member impacted, I see you, I support you, and I stand in solidarity with you. You are not alone. This is your school district, and this is your community. And as long as God allows me, I will advocate for your right to learn, grow, and be safe.
Thank you, President Erdnberger. Thank you very much, Ms. Almanza. Anybody else at that end of the table? Thank you. Ms. Full.
Thank you. I need to speak honestly about what's happening in our city. Over the past few days, ICE has been conducting immigration raids here in Omaha, and many of our families are afraid. They're afraid to send their kids to school, afraid to leave the house, and afraid of being separated from the people they love. I have heard the sentiment from the community that you haven't seen or heard enough clear and public support from our school district for these families. That's hard for me to sit with. This is about protecting our students. Back when our immigrant families are under attack, our district can't afford to stay silent. We need leadership, and we need action. I hope the Superintendent's comments were able to give you more information about what we are doing behind the scenes to support families as a district. I don't want to make this political, but let's be real. Education is political, especially in a red state like Nebraska with a Republican governor and increasing attacks on marginalized communities. We can't ignore what's going on before our very eyes, and we have to speak truth to power. Our district has an opportunity and a responsibility to show the rest of the state and the country what it looks like to stand up and fight back against injustice together. This moment calls for courage, it calls for compassion, and it calls for us to be bold. Because when we say every student, every day, that has to mean every student, no matter their background, no matter their immigration status. To our immigrant and refugee families, we see you, and I will keep fighting for you because you are a part of this district, this city, this country, and you deserve to be safe. I'm looking forward to hearing everyone's comments tonight about how we can show up better for our students and families during this scary and uncertain time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Full. Ms. Magnusson. Ms. Krackey.
I want to change attention to our agenda, and I want to point out that we are a very large district, as you know, and we have so many needs. They are addressed somewhat in our consent agenda tonight. For instance, I've been in the district since they had rolling wood, rolling floors. Rose Hill used to have a floor that was like this, and so if you put something on the edge of it, it would roll all the way down the hill. It's just something that was there for years and years until that was taken care of. And there are about three things here that are going to be taken care of, like televisions for our new and needed teachers, like $700,000. That sounds like so much money, but when you figure all the staff that we have and all the classrooms. And then the flooring is going to be done at Mount View, and I said to them, didn't we do Mount View's floor already? And they said, no, we did every other piece of Mount View, and this is the last piece to get done. And the other thing was the Lewis and Clark roof. I can remember that forever and ever. Some of you are around and have remembered that also. So that is the last little piece. I remember thinking Lewis and Clark, just kept getting so many things. And when I went to visit, I couldn't believe how many things they really needed. So I want to back that up to share with you that sometimes we don't always know what someone needs unless we go out there and look at it. And then the other thing is, we are getting new music books for orchestra, jazz band, and guitar. Just think, the teachers have been there, they know all those songs, they've done them over and over again, but just think, oh, very, very, very old those music books have been, and now they're going to have new music books. So I bet they're going to be all excited. The other thing was, how many bundles of things that they're getting ready for the new teachers? That is going to come to 11,000, wait, 11 million. It's over $11 million for the bundles of new equipment that they will be giving to the teachers, who are going to be very excited to get the things that we give them in OPS and the things that they have to look forward to. So I just wanted to acknowledge some of those things that go by us when we do the consent agenda, and you aren't aware of how exciting that is and it's going to be for the teachers. This year, I hope that they come back and tell us about some of their excitement because I've been excited about a lot of things that they're going to be doing and getting. So I hope we get a hear from them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Krackey. Vice President Snipes.
Thank you, President Erdnberger, and good evening. I just want to thank, first of all, the teachers and the community who felt safe enough as to reach out to me over the past week. I also would acknowledge that, you know what so many of you in this room are feeling, and that's frustration, anger, sadness, as our students, families, and staff just navigate the fear and the confusion that these raids have created over the past week. Many of you have shared, just being honest, that you don't feel like our superintendent has shown up in the ways you hoped during the crisis, and I hear that. I see the pain behind these concerns. As Ms. Full just acknowledged, there's always some hidden and unknown context as well. I also want to share something personal. Ms. Full came and picked me up, and we went out to one of the factories where we believed a raid was happening, and I stood there watching people walk away in tears, families very scared, children worrying whether their parents were going to come home or not, and it was just very heartbreaking. And it reminded me again that this isn't a theoretical situation, it's something that is very real. And as someone who has a village mentality, these are, and not just me, everyone up here, I believe, has a village mentality, and these are our families and our kids or our babies, I like to say. And just as a Black woman from South Omaha, you know, I understand what it means for families to feel targeted, to feel vulnerable, and to also feel unprotected. I stand with this community in saying that we deserve to feel seen, we deserve to feel heard, and we deserve leadership that responds in these moments. And I do appreciate that Superintendent Ray has acknowledged that silence, even when unintentional, can be perceived as indifferent, and that recognition matters because perception becomes reality for those who are living through fear and uncertainty. At the same time, I want to name that this is a space that Superintendent Ray, myself, others in leadership, haven't had to navigate before, and so it's stretching everyone, and yes, him too. And so as a Board member, I have been consistently encouraging stronger, clearer communication, not to cover for anyone, not to make excuses, but just because families do deserve it, and then trust just really depends on that. And so accountability and compassion, I just want to acknowledge, are two things that can coexist together. Holding leadership accountable to communicate well is not an attack. It's part of just protecting our students, protecting our staff, and really just the entire community. And so I say this as someone who has been a part of conversations that many of you just are not privy to and probably never will be, but there are many, including everyone up here, who are pushing for the voices in this room to be heard, and I'll continue to share that.
Thank you very much, Vice President Snipes. I'm just going to say a couple seconds, and I didn't prepare any remarks, so who knows where this is going to go, but, okay, just hang on. First of all, with respect to the communication piece, Superintendent Ray alluded to this in his remarks, but I do want the other Board members to know that Ms. Snipes and I did get regular communications from him describing the interactions he was having with all of our summer school schools, checking in to see what was happening, where things were going. He was meeting with political leaders and doing what he could, although unsuccessfully, but he tried, to get names of people that were detained or their families. So I just want you to know that, again, as Ms. Snipes says, lack of public action does not bespeak lack of caring, and she's right, every single person sitting up at this table, and I'm going to speak for all of the nearly 10,000 staff members we have, we love our babies, and we will do what we can, all of them, every day, to keep them safe. I am going to say, though, and I'm sorry if this sounds like I'm making excuses, I don't intend to, but I am the Chair of the Legislative Committee for the Board, and I know that we just spent six months protecting the funding for public schools in Nebraska. And what we need to do at all times in connection with protecting our students is to also make sure that we have funding. And in these uncertain political times, sometimes that route does not make everybody happy, and we couldn't be more sorry for that, but it's part of the overall decision-making process that did take place last week. Now, having said that, the next item is public comment. However, and I don't think I shared this with all the Board members, but as you are aware, Policy 8346 requires those wishing to address the Board to submit a request to be heard form no later than five minutes after the meeting has been called to order, which in this case was 5:30. Given that we moved the start time of the meeting up today, first time, summer hours, several Board members have expressed concern that members of the public who arrived thinking the meeting starts at 6 o'clock would not be able to participate in public comment. With that in mind, I would entertain a motion to suspend the five-minute requirement in Policy 8346 for tonight's meeting and instead have a 35-minute requirement. If approved, members of the public would have until 6:05 to submit their requests to be heard forms. My plan would then be to move Item G, public comment, to after Item A because the next couple items will go really fast. Would anyone like to make such a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, everybody made the motion, and I think Ms. Full seconded it. Let's go with Ms. Almanza making the motion, and Ms. Full, was that you? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Magnusson seconding it. We have a motion by Board Member Almanza and a second by Board Member Magnusson to suspend the five-minute requirement for submission of the request to be heard form set forth in Policy 8346 for tonight's meeting and instead have a 35-minute requirement until 6:05, which is in about 11 minutes. As a reminder, in order to suspend 8346, it will require a two-thirds vote of the Board. Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Krackey.
Aye.
Nainai.
Excellent, thank you, Board members. The motion carries. Dr. McFarland, please move Item G, public comment, to after Item I, action items, and before Item J, receipt of reports. Like I said, the next little part will go quickly, so don't think we're putting you off forever. Moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, any Board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and voted on separately. At this time, are there any items Board members would like to pull from consent? Seeing none, are there any abstentions?
Yes, President Erdnberger, I'd like to abstain from Item H12, Claim C for my role on the Omaha Public Schools Foundation.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Ms. Magnusson, seconded by Mr. Tealyn. And we will get to the roll call in a second here. That was a motion by Magnusson, seconded by Tealyn. Roll call, please. Dr. McFarland.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Krackey.
Aye.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Nainai.
Excellent, thank you, Board members. Motion carries. Moving on to information items, first we will have Suzanne Kramer speaking about giving us an update on the Improvement Days, largely known to parents as the late start days.
Good evening, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the Board, and Mr. Ray. Tonight, we're providing a brief update on improvement day late starts in the Omaha Public Schools. We know that job-embedded time for teacher and team collaboration is essential to continuous improvement and for reaching our moonshot. As a reminder, last year, you all graciously voted for a calendar that allowed four to five late starts over the next two years, and we call those improvement days. Improvement Days in the Omaha Public Schools create space for collaborative learning by doing the most effective form of professional learning. The purpose of these late starts is for collaborative teams to engage in the planning and checking phases of the Plan, Do, Check, Act Improvement Cycle. Time should be used for planning module and lesson designs, analyzing tasks, answering the question, is this grade-level work, creating models of excellence, analyzing student work, and making meaning of our reading data. In addition to instructional improvement, teams of counselors, social workers, MTSS teams, attendance teams engage in on-track attendance and other multiple metric PDCA cycles. We even have created opportunities for specialists who don't have like teachers in their schools to collaborate over teams around literacy and their content areas and engaging in those PDCA cycles across schools. This slide shows staff absences for all Tuesdays across the 2024-25 school year. The bottom row shows the average absences for all Tuesdays at each level in the district. Overall, feedback from teachers, administrators, paraeducators... Overall, feedback from teachers, administrators, parent educators all show that this work is effective and it's valued by our schools as they engage in continuous improvement. You'll notice in the averages that middle school and high school have lower average absences on Improvement Days than other given Tuesdays across the year. We're closely monitoring this number. We are looking at agendas, following evidence of improvement, and continuing to grow and making use of this really important gift of time for our staff. We know, and I certainly know as a parent, that late starts interrupt family routines. We have worked with our partners to ensure that before-school care is extended on those mornings, that we offer transportation and meals at our before-school provided programs, and we continue to reinforce the importance of daily, regular attendance for staff, students, and families as we work toward our moonshot. This year, we ask that agendas for improvement teams be collaboratively created by instructional leadership teams. They use a Canvas course with protocols and options to collaborate and build their agendas collectively. We provide feedback to schools and principals on those agendas. Principal supervisors and PLCs support schools during these mornings. We wanted to share some specific examples of how schools are using this time. So on your screen, you'll see the agenda from Belvedere Elementary. On the right, this is a Common District template. Do you want me to pause? Are you not seeing it there? You got it, okay. Are we good? Okay. All right, thanks, Ricky. We wanted to share a specific example from Belvedere. Here you see the district template on the right that schools can use to build their agenda. So here at Belvedere, you can see that the ILT planned instructional sequences using the high-quality instructional materials. They practiced doing a dry run of an upcoming reading lesson to solve instructional challenges that might arise. And then they did some checking and acting through data-informed conversation about student work achievement trends and instruction. Here, you can see Lothrup's example. Again, you can see the district template on the left. And then Lothrup's ILT and the principal have worked together to have grade-level-specific work in collaborative teams. And so here, you can see evidence of the UNO Science of Reading coursework being applied to and living in our Improvement Day schedule by grade level at Lothrup Elementary. Here at Lewis &amp; Clark, again, you can see the Common Agenda template where the school has aligned the work of the Improvement Day to their school improvement plan. You can see that for this January 28th day, middle school teachers at Lewis &amp; Clark went through their Winter MAP data. PLCs then collaborated around that data. And then teachers made plans and took actions based on that data and student work and then planned their next steps for their PLCs. And here you can see evidence of the MTSS Tier 2 PDCA cycle living with other staff teams at Lewis &amp; Clark Middle School on January 28th Improvement Day. We wanted to share a high school example as well. This comes from Westview, where they've been engaging in the question of what is proficiency? What is grade-level work? And at Westview, they've been analyzing collaboratively assessments, discussing levels of proficiency, and then within their PLC groups, developing common proficiency scales for their next assessments, planning their next unit, and planning those common formative assessments by content area at Westview. So some key takeaways that we wanted to share with you. We know that this is an investment of time from you all, from our staff, from our families. And we also know that job-embedded time to do the work of continuous improvement is essential. Improvement Days build a culture of collaboration by providing dedicated, extended time to plan and assess student work and performance. They're essential to accelerating those Plan-Du-Check-Akt cycles to move more rapidly. And they're shifting facilitation from continuous improvement being a principal-led endeavor to being collaboratively developed by ILTs and with teacher leadership. We know we have continued work to support families around the importance of daily attendance. And we continue to explore ways of how we're going to prioritize time and make the best use of our time as we work toward our moonshot. And with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
I'm sorry, two ears, two things. Ms. Full.
Thank you for the presentation. So I'm just kind of like double-checking. So with the next school year in the fall, they will have extended childcare available for families for these Improvement Days?
So we did this year. So any school that had before-school care, we offered that extended time. And any families that were enrolled in that before-school care were able to bring their children for that extended time before school started. And that was true this year and will be next year.
Okay. But we still saw that 3% increase in attendance even with the extended care?
Yes, a 3% difference in chronic absenteeism on those days. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Magnuson.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Do you... Is any adjustment to Improvement Days anticipated due to that increase in absences?
You voted on the calendar for next year. So at this time, we're maintaining the five Improvement Days that we have. However, as part of our stakeholder engagement and planning for strategies alongside our moonshot, we're looking at all ways to invest in time. As I was saying from the beginning and at the end, we know that staff need time to collaborate and extended time to do the work of digging into the data, planning, and so forth. And sometimes that isn't available in a job-embedded way. And so for next year, we're looking at continuing them. However, as we move forward, we'll be looking at ways to get the most out of our time for continuous improvement work as we move forward into the next strategic plan.
Ms. Almanza.
Thank you. I just want to make sure. So if a student that doesn't get transportation from OPS goes to the school at the normal hour, but is not part of the morning care or enrolled in that program, what happens to them? And how is that burden mitigated so that it doesn't fall on the staff around the educators that need to be?
So you're asking if a student's parent brings them to the school at the normal start time, but they're not enrolled in the before-school program?
Or if they walk to school, they forgot, they didn't know, walked to school, or not enrolled in the after-school program?
We've instructed our schools to obviously have them come inside, call home, remind families of the time, and so forth. I have not had reports of that happening. Our schools have tried to make sure that they have someone there to greet. We send out reminders from district communications the night before, ahead of time, right, to remind families. But of course, we would call the family, remind them of the time, and so forth.
Okay. That's great to know that the student would be let in.
Mr. Tealyn.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. I really just want to say I appreciate you bringing this back to us. We had questions and concerns about how this would affect families. And we wanted to make sure that it was going to be valuable. And you've brought it back to us to let us know that it is. And that's important to accountability, so I appreciate that. But also, it's good to know that we're getting this benefit out of this time. So this is a really important step towards our long-term goals. And I know we will continue, as you have said, to continue to try to make sure we're getting the best use out of this time and to continue to take the feedback that we're getting about when those days are and how we communicate about them. So thank you very much.
Ms. Snipes.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. And thank you for putting this together and dealing with my question.
Happy to.
Help refresh my memory. When it comes to the attendance and the increase, or even before the increase, do we know that it's transportation that's the issue? Is anything else, like scheduling or just like communication or anything that you're aware of?
I think for different families, the issue is different, whether it's a work schedule, transportation. Of course, those students who are routed continue to be routed on those days, but at the later time. Childcare, any number of those things. And so we are, along with all of our other attendance work, digging in to understand more about how families experience that and what we can do to communicate, to support, and so forth, while continuing to ensure that we have job-embedded time for our staff and teachers to do this important work.
Thank you. And I don't doubt that these days move the needle on like achievement growth and things like that. Are we tracking that? Is that something that can be shared as you go along?
Yes, absolutely. So we've had one year of four Improvement Days and working really hard to support our school leaders and our ILTs to think about that time as part of that continuous loop of improvement, not we do this thing on Improvement Days and we do this thing during PLCs or this thing in our staff meetings. But really, how are we continuing that cycle to move quickly and seeing all of that time as continuous across the year? This is just a time to do deeper work, to look at that MAP data, to look at student work. I'll share a couple... I'll share an example of Walnut Hill. They are deeply engaged in using planning and practice protocols to collaboratively plan, practice lessons, kind of what you saw in that Belvedere Agenda. And so the week before the Improvement Day, the teachers might work together to do that planning. Then they would teach the lesson. Then on the Improvement Day, they come back with the student work and the data alongside that to look at the work and plan their next step. So it's really tightening up that cycle to be more quickly... to be more quick, to be more responsive to students and improve instruction.
And then I thought there was a piece about continuing to like support families around the importance of attendance. And so I just wonder if there's maybe like something just to think about, like some specific sort of like outreach or messaging that could be done to like improve attendance on those days?
Yes, I think there definitely could be. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I've not been faced with these many moving pieces at once, but I think I'm about to exercise my prerogative as President of the Board to adjust the agenda one more time. And rather than go on to the next presentation, I think we will move on to public comments. Good to go? Okay. Then, as of now, the next item on the agenda is Public Comment. We have 11 speakers who have submitted requests to speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comments for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. Given the number of speakers, we ask that, to the extent you are able, you keep your comments brief so that we can hear from as many of you as possible in the allotted time. We understand that people have strong feelings about issues that may be raised, so we ask that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during their comments. If the subject of your public comments is related to a specific student or staff member, please do not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into your concerns. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland, and she'll make sure each member of the Board gets a copy. Pursuant to the requirements specified in Nebraska Revised Statute 841412, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any organization before you begin your public comment. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the Board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Dr. McFarland will come get them from you. It is now 6:15, and our first speaker is Ms. Monica Arroyo. Hopefully, I've got that right.
My name is Monica Arroyo. 3560 Jackson Street. Good evening, Superintendent Ray, members of the Board and OPS leadership. My name is Monica. I am the President of the Jackson Elementary School PTL. And I am so proud to see our community here tonight. I'm here tonight, not just in my role as a parent leader, but as someone who knows personally what it means to watch your family be torn apart. I was the second critter when I saw my mother be deported. That moment shattered my sense of safety and left me carrying a trauma that no child should have to bear. I remember the confusion, the shame, the heavy isolation, and the silence that followed. It breaks my heart that so many years later, I have to see the children of my community face the same trauma themselves. That same silence that I faced cannot continue today. I am here to represent those children, and I ask that you do right by them. Last week's ICE raids in South Omaha tore apart 76 families. The fear rippled across our community. Students were frightened, schools disrupted, and children traumatized. At Jackson Elementary, our students are already grieving. A parent was taken in an ICE raid, leaving behind children who are now trying to pick up the pieces and feel the weight of the world on their shoulders. The idea that staying quiet might somehow protect our schools from being a target is no longer relevant. The damage has been done. OPS has been impacted. This is not a hypothetical and never has been. This is not the first time OPS families have been torn apart by ICE. Children in OPS have been losing parents to ICE all year. Superintendent Ray, I appreciate the recent OPS comments. It was a good first step, but we cannot stop there. Protecting our students and responding to childhood trauma is not a political statement. It is our moral obligation as a community and is your moral obligation as people who are entrusted with the safety of our children. Tonight, I am asking for four clear, urgent actions. First, OPS must form a real partnership with community experts in the field of immigration, like the Center for Immigrant and Refugee Advancement. Invite them into our schools. Let them speak directly to families and students in their languages about their rights. Give our families the tools they need to protect themselves and their children. Second, every teacher and staff member in OPS should be trained and encouraged to reach out to agencies like Sierra. When a student or family is in need of advocacy or support, teachers are the front lines. Support them by giving them the tools they need to respond. Third, OPS must make it undeniably clear that we do not just stand with immigrant communities, we stand for them. This must show up in our policies, training, and daily practice. And finally, I am asking for a district-wide rapid-response plan, one that can be deployed immediately when ICE activities affect our students. A plan that includes trauma-informed care, crisis protocols, and contingency planning for the children who are left behind. The fear, instability, and lifelong trauma our immigrant students are experiencing cannot be treated as side issues. They are education issues. They are public health issues. They are human issues. OPS is the largest and most diverse school district in the state of Nebraska. I applaud OPS for their commitment to support our communities of color and our LGBTQ communities this past weekend at the Juneteenth and Omaha Pride parades. It makes me so proud to be part of this district. I ask that you show the same courage and unwavering support to our immigrant families. to our immigrant families. Please do not meet these tragedies with silence or symbolic gestures. Meet them with preparation, with partnership, and with purpose. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're gonna, I apologize, but we do request that we not have outbursts, although I know we all are clapping in our hearts. Next speaker would be Martha Omar.
Martha Omar, M-A-R-T-H-A-O-M-A-R, 3320 Dewey Ave. Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Martha Omar. I'm here tonight as a parent and as a teacher. My two sons attend Jackson Elementary, a dual-language school filled with talented teachers, students, and families. Families who were sadly impacted by last week's raids. I'm also a teacher and a coach at Central High School, where I've taught in the English department for 12 years. Another OPS school, whose community felt the weight of raids as families were separated. I'm speaking tonight because I care deeply about the safety and well-being of our OPS students and their family. As an educator and a coach, I have seen firsthand the quiet burdens many of our students carry. Often, I'm the first that student, a student confides in. I'm the only one, I'm the one they trust to have answers. Many years ago, a junior in my class came to me in panic. She wanted to pursue her CNA through our Career Center, but her documentation status made her ineligible. I was the only adult she felt safe enough to tell, but I didn't know how to help her. I didn't know who in our district or community could offer the guidance she needed. Later in my career, a senior told me she wanted to become a pilot, but she feared her immigration status would stop this dream. By then, I'd learned about the Immigrant Legal Center, now known as CIRA, and I connected her with someone who could help. But by the time she reached out to me, she was 18 and had received, and had she received immigration support at 16, she may have had more legal options as an unaccompanied minor. That moment solidified to me that teachers need to know about these resources so we can help our students sooner. This is what it means to live out an ethic of care, to create schools where our students feel supported and valued. Our school's mission is every student, every day, prepared for success. That preparation must include emotional safety, knowledge of legal support resources, and a school system that stands by them, especially during moments of fear and crisis. Many of our students carry the weight of uncertainty about their own futures due to immigration status, but they also carry the weight of their parents being arrested at their place of work. This is not a new fear, but it was exasperated by Tuesday's raids. That is more than any child should have to carry. How can we help them carry this burden? I understand that we may not want to put a target on our back as a district or attract further attention, but the truth is, there's already a target on the backs of many of our students and their families. This week, I sat with one of my former athletes, the first in her family to graduate high school and attend college as she bravely faced the complex world of immigration law, figuring out bond for her hard-working mother that was taken into custody at the end of her night shift at Glen Valley. We need to be in this space with our students. While they carry the weight of the world on their young shoulders, we need to help carry some of this weight. So, tonight, I ask the Board to act with courage and clarity. I ask that we create a rapid response plan that includes clear and reassuring communication for families when immigration actions impact our community. Build strong partnerships with trusted organizations and welcome them into our schools for presentations, for support, and for staff training. We need to equip our teachers and staff with the knowledge of community resources so no student has to rely on chance to find help or resources. Let's please lead boldly, as our mission calls us to do, knowing that our leadership here could help students feel safer attending school every day and help teachers feel equipped to answer questions we're asked every year. Let's ensure that OPS is not only a place of learning, but a place of safety and obvious support. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Mr. Wes Jensen.
Wes Jensen, W-E-S-J-E-N-S-E-N. I speak as an individual, as an educator, and member of the OPS community at large, 2323 Howard Street. Board members and Superintendent Ray, as many have acknowledged this evening, I am concerned of recent ICE raids in our community that have traumatized our students, families, educators, staff, and the larger community. I speak tonight asking for clarification on SROs, Student Resource Officers' role in the district in light of last week's ICE activity. The reason I ask is that OPD has performed traffic control services. If such action would occur in the future at or near school grounds, would SROs, which are OPD contracted district employees, assist in logistical measures during ICE raids? The question, the question and ask for clarification deserves an answer. ICE raids traumatize and destabilize our immigrant communities, and such cooperation has potential consequences for OPS. One, it can erode trust between OPS and the community, especially those of our immigrants and refugee families. It can discourage individuals from communicating and accessing district resources, and most importantly, coming to school to move forward in their learning. Number three, it can send a contradictory message to the OPD, contradictory message with OPS's stated commitment to every student, every day, prepared for success. I appreciate your attention to this concern and the words and actions shared before this evening, shared this evening, and the actions and words that will happen in the weeks and days to come. But most importantly, I appreciate it because we all want to ensure that every student belongs and can move forward in their learning. Thank you so much. And to the members of our immigrant community, as an educator and as a community member, I see you, I stand with and for you as an educator. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jensen. Our fourth speaker will be Ms. Veronica Amaya. And as she comes to the podium, I note that she has requested that the Board waive the requirement that she state her address for security reasons. In support of that waiver request, Ms., I'm sorry, I've got to turn around. Ms. Amaya refers to a safety concern related to immigration. So, is there a motion to waive the requirement that Ms. Amaya state their address?
So moved. Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Holman moved, seconded by Ms. Almanza. If, is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Dr. McFarland.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tiedlen.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Bo.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Fracki.
Aye.
Magnuson.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Nainai.
Excellent. Thank you, Board members. The motion passes. Ms. Amaya, you will not be required to give your address. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Veronica Amaya. First name V-E-R-O-N-I-C-A, last name Amaya, A-M-A-Y-A. My daughter is in first grade in the dual-language program at Jackson. Last week was a horrible week for our community and for the families affected. I have, I also work with unaccompanied minors at CIRA, the Center for Immigrant and Refugee Advancement. So, as you can all imagine, it was very difficult. At pickup from next-level learning, there was only a total of three children in my daughter's class. The businesses and streets in South Omaha were closed, lonely and in fear. Our community also received support, but to those who said nothing, and I appreciate everybody that's addressed that, that also sent a message. And even though our intentions are different, it's important that we're able to have a plan and react in the way that can support our students and families. For my child and children in the school district, they need to be able to have the resources and the trust. And that's why it's important that the school district is able to collaborate with other organizations. You know, children and their families and communities need transparency, especially on issues like immigration. This is not something that is new to us, and I feel that there should have been better planification. Today, I'm going to be brief. I just came to ask that we stand for immigrants, like the rest of the people have asked, and that the administration, the staff, the teachers be trained on ways to support and deal with situations like this. Immigrants matter, children matter, and we can choose to do the best for them. And I understand there's different ways to do that. But I just hope that you guys ask the families and ask organizations that know these people, that know what they need and the support that they need.
Thank you very much. Our fifth speaker will be Ms. Adele Salazar. Sorry, mister.
Hello. My name is Adele Salazar, A-U-D-E-L-S-A-L-A-Z-A-R, 15938 Dorcas Circle. I come here tonight as a concerned citizen and parent. I tried to write a speech, but nothing just came to mind whatsoever. The only thing that kept popping up for me, and which has been echoed by many of the people in this room, is the frustration and disappointment at the lack of transparency from our Board and Superintendent. And I'm not ignorant. I, I understand there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes. But it's very hard to rebuild and repair that trust now that it's been broken. But I hope that everyone on this Board has listened to what the community members have said and will take those first steps. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Salazar. Our next speaker will be Mr. Russell Herrera.
Good evening. My name is Russell Herrera, R-U-S-S-E-L-L-H-E-R-R-E-R-A. My address is 3560 Jackson Street. I'm, I'm coming to speak to you as a father and as a United States Marine Combat Veteran. I feel it's important to mention that because of my frustration and the, the, just the shame that I feel in the lack of planning and execution in last week's raids, it's very important for me, those things are very important to me. They've been ingrained into who I am as a person. I also do operations work in, in general as a career path right now. So, I, I, it's important for me that you understand that and you know that that's where I'm coming from. I also have brought my two sons with me today. It's important for me as a father that they see who is serving them, who has been elected to serve them. Boys, I want you to understand that these are the people who are supposed to be protecting you and your friends at any given moment. I understand there's a lot of pressure for everybody here. I hope that you all feel that in, in a healthy way, but I also hope that you do feel a little bit of shame given the way things worked out last week. I've heard a lot of reactive responses, reactive actions that have been taken. That, I, I feel that's unacceptable as, as a citizen, as a parent. There are, there has been a lot of mention about different programs and agencies within, within the district that are prepared and that have taken the time to get ready for things like this. They are ready to work with you. And I have, I would hope and expect that, as part of your planning going forward, that you take those opportunities seriously and that you write them into your SOPs and your procedures and your daily operations. The way I see it, this ICE enforcement, the safety planning and response, planning that goes around that should not be any different than your disaster recovery planning. It should not be any different than an active shooter drill, should not be any different than a fire drill, anything like that. I think it should be taken as seriously, which means that your teachers, your faculty need to be prepared. You've all had the same amount of time as the rest of us to get prepared. I think with the election that took place, we knew that this was coming. It was promised that it was coming. And when the time came, it was silence. And that's, that's, I guess, what I'm most frustrated with. Like everybody else here, I'd like to see an action plan developed. I'd like to see it practiced, and I'd like to see it executed. I don't think that these raids or enforcements are going to slow down. I think they're going to speed up. I'd also like you to know that I grew up in a small town about an hour west of here called Skyler, Nebraska, which is also a very heavy immigrant refugee population. I'm incredibly proud to say that they recently won their first state championship in soccer a few weeks ago. And that team is 95% more, if not more, refugee and immigrant-filled. So, that was an incredibly proud moment for me. But that, what that makes me think of is, who, who do communities like that have to look up to as far as their education board? To me, the reason that I chose Omaha is the place to put my roots down and to raise my children is because those cities that are like that and the city that I grew up in love should have a solid representation and a solid example to follow. Along with everything that I've mentioned, I would like to see that plan when it is carried out. I'd like to see it in Spanish. I'd like to see it in other languages. And as others have mentioned, I think that we should be able to meet those children and those families where they are, in the, in the languages that they are. Again, there, there are resources in this city, and there are agencies that are ready to work with you. I think you just need to take a lot of, put a lot of weight on that.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herrera. Our next speaker is Mia Garcia.
Hello. Buenas tardes. My name is Mia Garcia, M-I-A-G-A-R-C-I-A, 2805 Ford Street. Similar to many of the other speakers up here, I've tried to formulate my thoughts, but it's hard because frankly, I never thought that I'd have to be up here trying to convince the Board that our students' struggles are worthy of proper recognition. So, please bear with me as well, especially because I only recently became aware of this opportunity to speak. I am a current student at UNL. I have been on the dean's list for most if not all of my semesters there. I'm also an OPS alum and have been a recipient of multiple awards and scholarships throughout high school and college, including some from the OEA, Trencher Foundation Institute of Excellence, and Education Quest. And I'm not saying that to brag, but I'm saying that to illustrate a picture of what students can become when they don't have to worry about themselves or their loved ones essentially being kidnapped and expelled by the, from this country forcefully, without due process, and treated without the dignity and respect that every person deserves. It's really heartbreaking for, just to see that, the pain that my community and many other communities are going through. I think, I hope that y'all know the implications of adverse childhood experiences. And I hope that y'all would agree with me that these ICE raids and violence that our students are being subjected to would fall under that and would not escape all the consequences that come with. A study from 2021 showed that- A study from 2021 showed that immigration's concerns obviously would also result in a lot of a rise in absenteeism for students, decline in academic achievement, attendance, like I mentioned, measures of school climate and safety. And that was just years ago. I cannot imagine the statistics now. And that was only for Latinx students. And we know that the targets that our students have are not just Hispanic students or Latinx students. It's any minority, racial, ethnic, in any way. But not that I should have to, you know, say how many students or throw out a number for us to be concerned, but I just want to remind y'all that in the last academic year, there were 21,748 Hispanic students in OPS from pre-K through 12th grade. Along with the other measures that our wonderful speakers have mentioned, I would like to also suggest social media. Because I do believe that it is a privilege to be in this room, speaking my concerns, to be listening to y'all. And it's not a privilege that everyone can afford to come here. We need to also make these communication channels where people express their concerns more accessible. And I mean, scrolling through y'all's Facebook, which is honestly probably the main form of communication for a lot of students especially, but also parents, I don't really see many mentions about the true concerns that we're facing in the last several months. So I just want to throw that out there. And also, something else to consider is transportation. I mean, students shouldn't have to be worried about being picked up by ICE officers while they're waiting at the bus stop. They shouldn't have to worry about coming home to an empty house. They should be able to focus on school, to focus all their energy and their time on homework, not on all of this that they're being subjected to. And while I understand that it can take time to, like you said, come up with something and be careful with what we're saying, I just want to remind y'all that silence is violence. So when you're being silent or doing the bare minimum when it comes to acknowledging what the students are going through, when you're subjecting them through to that silence, you're also subjecting them to violence, you're allowing it to happen. So I hope to see the efforts continue and like others said, make use of the community that surrounds you and that needs you in this moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. Our next speaker is Lucia Pedrosa Estrada. Hopefully, I got that right.
Good afternoon. My name is Lucia Pedrosa Estrada. It's spelled L U C I A P E D R O Z A E S T R A D A. Oh, it's like Estrada, E S T R A D A. My address is 3115 North 56th Street. This is the first time I ever testified at the board meeting, so thank you, Vidi, for inviting. Or your title, board member. Sorry. Okay. Yes, I am here, and I also didn't prepare a whole speech, but I wrote some notes on some things that I thought could be helpful. And I think one of the biggest things we need right now is an advocate from OPS, an advocate so that kids, especially right now, that are separated or they're in fear, have their basic needs. There are people afraid to leave their houses right now. And there's, you know, the community is kind of stepping up with the little information that we have. There are systems being put in place to support families, to bring them their food or like just necessities that they can't buy on their own. So just, it would be really helpful to have an advocate from OPS who understands that this is real. Children might not be even having access to food right now because of the fear. Well, you could be an advocate in safety. That doesn't have to always include law enforcement. So, you know, being an ally and creating the alternatives to law enforcement in this situation when people are already in fear. You could also collaborate with organizations, which you might be already, but not everybody has that information. So maybe just, I don't know, just making sure that more people know that you're doing something and possibly partner with local foundations. We know that there's already funding crisis nationwide, but we have, we need to get the attention of the local resources and, you know, come up with a creative message of why we need to be funding our schools right now, especially because of programs like, you know, food security programs are being cut nationwide. We don't know, again, if people have food at home. So yes, we need you to fundraise, fundraise for the basic needs that our children need. And mental health support, you know, like there's a lot of community professionals that are willing to step in and support, but nobody's calling them. Nobody knows how to call them or how to put a network together of mental health professionals. And they're waiting for the call. So like I said, collaboration with community leaders, creating alternatives to having law enforcement involved and transparency in the budget process. Because like I said, this is my first time coming here and I don't really know what the full process is to understand what your budget is and how, where are our tax dollars going? And just more information for parents as well. I'm a parent from the OPS school system. I have a high schooler and a middle schooler. And, you know, they're still struggling from the pandemic. You know, there's a gap of education that hasn't been met on that end. And that's a whole other conversation. But yes, we just need more, more information for parents and how we can be involved. And I had something else. Oh, yes, my son. Okay. My son is in high school, but he had to leave last year to Kansas because he wasn't doing well in the school where he was at. And because again, he was able to catch up from the pandemic. And this is related, you know, we're immigrants as well. We, like, all types of immigrants struggle in the system. So this is just another example. Even though I am established and I am documented, my children are also struggling. And so I'll just take the opportunity to share that he asked if we could fundraise for laptops and not just iPads. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pedrosa Estrada. Our next speaker is Luis Jimenez.
Luis Jimenez, L U I S J I M E N E Z, 2709 Dewey Avenue. And my comments are twofold. I'm writing an opinion piece, so I'll share what that is gonna kind of be about. And then I'm going to share this document that I'm going to give the council members tomorrow. The subject is "Who Can Be Deported Without a Hearing?" So the opinion piece, I think I'm going to title it, "Why Knowing the Law Still Matters: Rejecting Resignation in the Face of Immigration Abuses." In many corners of our immigration and allied communities, a dangerous narrative is quietly taking hold, that understanding your rights, learning the immigration system, or knowing the limits of government authority is futile under the threat of authoritarian abuse. It goes something like this. President Trump will do whatever he wants anyway. The law won't protect us. This sense of resignation is emotionally understandable, but it is also strategically short-sighted, self-defeating, and historically inaccurate. And the biggest points are that knowledge is power, even in a broken system. Courts and legal system still, the legal system still matter. Resignation helps the oppressor. And history shows that that's the case. And so the document, I started thinking about how the media covers the community after a raid, and they often say there's fear and confusion. So that can inflict the community. U.S. Immigration Removal Basics. Deported Without Seeing a Judge. Applies Mostly to Those With Limited Rights or Recent Unlawful Entry. They are: Recent Border Crossers Within 14 Days Within 100 Miles of the Border. How? Expediated Removal by ICE or CBP. And can they fight it? Only if they ask for asylum or show fear, then they get an interview. Another category is Previously Deported Immigrants Who Were Re-Entered. And they go through a restatement of removal, and they can seek protection under asylum laws, which is limited, though. Another category is Non-Citizens With Aggravated Felony Conviction. And they have an administrative removal. No hearing, but may seek protection under international law. Immigrants Who Sign a Waiver Have a Stipulated Removal. It's voluntary, but they may not fully understand the consequences of the stipulated removal. And then, so we go to Who Must Go Before a Judge? These individuals have a right to due process in immigration court. Category of Lawful Permanent Residents, Green Card Holders. They must see a judge. Can fight removal or apply for relief, such as cancellation of removal. Another category is Undocumented Immigrants Living in the U.S. Over Two Years. Court Hearing Required. Often Eligible for Various Relief Options. Temporary Visa Holders Like B2, F1, and H1B.
One minute.
Must go before a judge if ICE initiates removal. And they can be deported for violating visa terms, committing crimes, or misrepresentation. Visa Overstayers Must Go Before Immigration Court And They Receive a Notice to Appear. Asylum Seekers Who Pass Screening. Full Hearing Before a Judge After Credible Fear Interview. And I just want to say that unless this, to end, unless the search warrant is signed by the judge, not ICE, you have the right to not open the door. And if you're afraid to return to your home country, say it clearly. This may trigger asylum protections. Thank you for your time. And Kimra, you can have this if you want.
Thank you. If you have something for us, give it to Dr. McFarland over there. Thank you. The next speaker is Anna Hernandez. Hernandez, sorry.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes, Superintendent, Honorable Board of Education. My name is Anna Hernandez, A N N A, Hernandez, H E R N A N D E Z, 3004 South 126 Plaza. So here we are again, 33 years after past president, precedent of two South High School students being removed, basically yanked from their classrooms, November 6, 1992. I welcome everybody to Google it. This happened more than 30 years ago. And here we are again in a similar situation, but with much more to lose. Thankfully, this made national news. At that time, there was no internet. It made NBC, ABC, CBS, public television. It was all over the place. It even made global news. And here we are again, 33 years later. OPS, a place where students are to find safety. 33 years later, what was the policy set after these two students were yanked from their classrooms? I don't know. I had heard murrings here and there that ICE is not allowed. But is this a solidified policy that the students can trust and that the teachers can trust? Those who are teachers in our school system develop relationship, use resources, and develop a special bond with the children. They're there to protect the children. OPS is there to protect the children. If protecting the children, the vulnerable, is not American, then I don't know what is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hernandez. And our final speaker will be on a different topic, and that is Ms. Michaela Kazor.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Kazor, M I C H A E L A K A Z O R. And my address is 1010 North 192nd Court. Good evening, members of the board, parents, and fellow community members. I stand here today with a different yet equally important topic than what others here were speaking on today. To begin, I would like the community members who are here today to know a little bit about me. I'm a 20-year-old college student that is not here representing a political view, but I am here representing the view that many young people in my generation carry because we have been personally affected by ideologies like the one that the policy I'm going to speak on pushes. And sadly, when I have expressed my concerns in the past, they have fallen on deaf ears, but I refuse to give up on my generation, and so I'm here speaking again. I'm here to, I'm here to speak on and raise awareness to the community about the gender identity equity guidelines of Omaha Public Schools that undermine our children's well-being, parental authority, and moral foundation of our schools. Genesis 127 declares that God created man in his own image. Male and female, he created them. This divine truth affirms the binary reality of humanity rooted in biology. Yet, these guidelines reject this promoting a radical ideology that confuses our children's and defies God's design. The guidelines state, "The district prohibits discrimination on the basis of gender identity, aiming to ensure the safety, comfort, and healthy development of transgender or gender expansive students. But true safety comes from affirming reality, not delusion. History warns us of the consequences. In the 1970s, Dr. John Moni's experiment on David Reimer, a boy raised as a girl after a failed medical procedure, led to profound psychological trauma and his eventual suicide. Why, then, would we adopt policies that push our kids towards this harm under the guise of compassion? The policy mandates, "Students shall be addressed by name and pronouns that correspond to their gender identity." And then that's the end of the quote. But what I want to say is that it doesn't say that there is parental consent or legal documentation needed. It allows students to access the restroom that corresponds to the student's gender identity and permits transgender students to use locker rooms consistent with the student's gender identity. Ignoring biological differences in private spaces isn't just unjust, but it's compromising and endangering our young ladies' safety and privacy. We're called to love our neighbors, including those who struggle with gender confusion. But love, as Aristotle notes, seeks the good of the other through truth, not affirmations of falsehoods. The guidelines definition of gender fluid as individuals who do not identify as a consistent gender promotes a view that gender is untethered from biology, contradicting reason. This policy also undermines parents whom Dunham &amp; Me 67 commands to teach their children diligently. The policy states, "Information about a student's transgender or gender expansive identity status will be considered confidential." So does that mean that it's not going to be shared with the parents without the student's consent? It treats families like adversaries, eroding the family, which is our society's foundation. The policy's corrosion is chilling. It warns that any employees or students who intentionally or persistently refuses to respect the gender identity of a student violates the guidelines, threatening free speech and religious liberty. The First Amendment protects our rights to speak truth, and we will not bow to demands to deny biology to appease a vocal minority. The reliance on external groups like PF, LAG, and GLSEN as listed in the resources recalls the 1960 sexual revolutions' rejection of objective truth which destabilized societal norms. This organization's push, these organizations push ideologies that profit from confusion and not clarity.
Thirty seconds.
Let's guide our children towards truth and Let's guide our children towards truth, and I pray that you guys let God guide you in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to everybody who spoke tonight, some of you for the very first time, and I hope you come back again. We appreciate your voices. That is the end of public comment. And we will now move on to the next information item, which is an update from Mr. Ryan on the replacement of the district's Enterprise Resource Planning System, otherwise known as ERP.
Good evening, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and Superintendent Ray. Thank you for this opportunity to update you on our progress on replacing the district's Enterprise Resource Planning System, or ERP system as it's commonly known. But I do like the ERP reference as well. Had not heard that before. We are reaching a very important milestone on a multi-year project. We have spent the last year researching our business practices and our system requirements to replace one of the most important tools from an administrative perspective for our district, PeopleSoft or our Enterprise Resource Planning System. This is the system that we use to manage our human resources information, pay our employees, keep track of what we pay our employees and vendors, and purchase items. So it is our general planning system and also where we administer the budget. PeopleSoft is the current ERP system that the district uses, and it was implemented in the early 2000s and subsequently upgraded and re-implemented in 2018. It is a highly customized system based on legacy practices in place at the time of its original implementation. When the district implemented PeopleSoft back in the early 2000s, the common industry standard was to take a software system and customize the code within the system to fit the existing business practices for the entity that was implementing the system. This has proven to be very problematic over the years, as when Oracle makes updates for the PeopleSoft system, our customization prevents us from implementing some of those updates or keeping up to date on our security practices. Our goal moving forward is to select a highly configurable system, something that provides us options within the existing code of the system so that we don't have to customize it, but it fits business practices that we can implement and will allow us to continue to keep up to date on our technology in this very important area. We also anticipate that we will be utilizing a cloud-based system, as that is the current industry standard for organizations our size, and should allow us to adopt current best practices, modernize our systems, and ensure our continued good stewardship of public funds and resources. Last year in July, we asked you to approve a contract with Acacia Consulting, now Huron Consulting Group, to provide ERP consulting services for this project. We are now reaching a major milestone of getting ready to issue a request for qualifications for a new system in the coming months. The scope of the work done by Huron Consulting Group was to help us assess and analyze business processes currently used throughout the district, develop an RFP for a modern system, assist district staff in the selection of a new vendor for a new system, and to be a strategic partner during the implementation of a new ERP system, and be our advocate on a full-time basis with the vendor that we would contract with the system for. Early on, working with Acacia, now Huron, we developed a project mission statement for this multi-year project, and it is to enhance Omaha Public Schools' operational efficiency through the implementation of an ERP system that optimizes processes, includes integration with external reporting systems, strengthens policy compliance, supports organizational improvement, and supports our commitment to providing a high-quality education for all students. This dovetails nicely with several of the major tenants of the moonshot, most importantly, the stop-doing and creating efficiencies for our staff to relieve administrative burden within the school buildings and our frontline educational staff. We have four overall project objectives: increased organizational efficiencies, process improvements, redesigning business processes, and technical efficiencies. We've got a bullet point list of several of those individual tactical efficiencies that we hope to improve over the course of the project that are detailed in the appendix. Won't go through those in any detail, but happy to follow up with any questions you might have if you were to forward those to Dr. McFarland. So what have we accomplished in the last year? We have reviewed and documented processes in the following areas on the graphs: benefits, recruiting, time and labor, payroll, accounting, warehousing, budget, and overall human resources and finance areas. We did this over the course of over 100 working sessions in the fall and the spring with many subject matter experts throughout the district. This information has helped inform the drafting of an RFP for the selection of a software solution to be released in early July. It was very important to us that we have our frontline staff, who are the process experts, to have their opinions heard in the development of the questions and specifications for the RFP, in conjunction with the expertise of the consultants who do these ERP selection and implementation processes on a daily basis. Key system alignments being explored are better integration of payroll and accounting information, better position management for budgeting purposes, more efficient extra-duty pay and time tracking, making that automated, also improving our warehouse receiving process, better management of the overall procurement process and purchase orders, also implementing strategic vendor management, so we have a portal potentially for our vendors to update their information and process more efficient payments to them. We're also exploring what's called an integration layer, which would provide seamless integration with systems such as Frontline for substitutes, Infinite Campus for our student information system, and Primero, our nutrition services system. And we would also be focusing on enhanced reporting and data visibility for frontline staff in buildings through dashboards and more real-time results on financial information. This slide is a roadmap of moving forward over the next year. In the first part of this year, we held working sessions for financial and supply chain management. In the second quarter of 2025, we had our deliverables complete from Huron, which was an analysis, a gap analysis of our requirements and their recommendations for building a request for proposal for the new ERP system and working through establishing our selection team and criteria. Coming up in the third quarter of calendar year 2025, we anticipate releasing the software RFP on July 7. We will collect the software responses and answer questions that they may have during that process. Once we receive the responses to the proposals in early August, we will work through and shortlist the responses down to a group of three vendors, we anticipate, and then invite them for onsite demonstration of the system, probably three days of demonstrations for each of the vendors over a period of six weeks. We would then hope to have a clear winner to be selected and recommended to the board by the second meeting in November, or more likely, the meeting in December, to award the response to the proposals and begin negotiations on a contract. At that point in time, we would then issue a separate request for qualifications for an integration vendor, someone to actually come in and implement the software that has expertise in the governmental and K-12 education space on implementing an ERP system, and work on developing a contract with a vendor. We would then form an internal ERP implementation team, selecting key subject matter experts throughout the organization to work on the project full-time, and select some individuals through temporary employment engagement to come and do their day jobs while they focus on designing the new system and implementing it. We would expect implementation processes to begin in July of 2026, with a target implementation date for the Human Capital Management System, or HR system, on January 1, 2028. And following that, the Financial Information and Supply Chain Management System would go live in April 1, 2020. Those dates were selected, or, excuse me, 2028. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Those dates were meaningfully selected to keep income tax reporting information confined within the legacy system, current legacy system, and the new system, and also not to try to implement the financial system during our audit and year-end process. So April 1 is a good mid-year point to implement that and convert existing year's financial data into the new system in preparation for our August 31 year-end. A lot of information for you. Very excited about this project. Mr. Wakefield and Dr. Nero and I have been serving as the executive sponsors for this project, and we have collaborated extensively to make sure that we are in alignment on the needs and requirements of this system and have felt very confident in the services that Acacia now, Huron, have provided and feel that we are on target to fully implement or to select an ERP system and begin implement in July of 2026. We put together a timeline over a year and a half ago, and we have met our first major milestone of issuing an RFP, and I'm very excited about that. This is going to be a great project for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. We'll have to take your word for it, that you're very excited about it. Questions, Mr. Teal.
Thank you, Ms. Erdnberger. I know we've talked about this a little bit already, and I think all of the things that are in your presentation suggest your approach, but there are some things that we can't change because we are required by law to do them in a certain way, but it sounds like we are really striving to change our processes rather than making new customizations to fit our current processes. Is that accurate?
So our goal is to select the most versatile system that will meet our diverse needs through all areas. That will hopefully allow most of our processes to move seamlessly into the new system, but we do believe that there will be some things that, based on industry standards and current practices versus legacy practices from pre-implementation of PeopleSoft, that we may be required to update moving into the new system. But we would anticipate those would provide operational efficiencies rather than be detrimental.
Will also allow us to do some of the stop-doing work, potentially.
I just, I think, as you have probably already discovered, those customizations have a long tail of pain. So to the degree that you can avoid them by conforming to whatever the system we have offers, I want to encourage that, and to the degree that there are, you know, district, I don't think this is the case, but to the degree there are district policies that might interfere with that, certainly bring those to us, and we can, you know, talk about how we might adjust those so that we are not an impediment to doing the standardized way versus a customized way.
Thank you for that offer, Mr. Teal.
I think my only other question is, at this point, how do we understand, or maybe we don't yet, we haven't really gotten into these particular systems, but how we will be able to approach our different reporting, our gap versus cash reporting and the conversion process? Is that something that we anticipate will be, I mean, I'm sure it will be made easier, but that will be handled in a more automated fashion, or is that something we're still going to have a lot of work to do?
So I am very, that's one of the things I'm excited about. I anticipate that a new, modern system will be much more conducive to implementing the GASBY standards, both existing and upcoming, and the modifications would be able to be made to the system that would help us implement those standards. I do think there's going to be some functional automation and some changes on that area that will be very beneficial and help remediate some of those audit findings that we've had over the past years about the gap conversion.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teal. Ms. Snipes?
Next question has kind of had me wondering about, I guess, any, like, board decision points or any, like, approvals in, like, future phases? What would that look like for the board?
Thank you for that question. So we will issue a request for qualifications in July. We'll get responses back in August. We'll evaluate those responses, shortlist it to three vendors, have demonstrations, and then at that point in time, we will score based on a rubric and recommend a solution to the board, likely at the December board meeting for your approval. And then we would move forward with selecting an additional vendor to actually implement the system along with our staff. And we would likely bring that request for qualifications recommendation to you in April or May.
Anybody else? Are we one of the last organizations using PeopleSoft at this point?
So thank you for that question. I did skip over a data point that wasn't on the slide. So PeopleSoft is approaching end of life. Back when I first started with the district in 2019, there was a 10-year expected end of life for PeopleSoft. They have rolled that 10 years forward annually. At some point in time, Oracle will decide that they're no longer going to support PeopleSoft, and then we will be on a ticking time clock. By undertaking this project now, we will do the project on our timeline and not be forced into a hasty conversion of some manner. And with some of the budget favorability over the past few years, we have set aside some sufficient funds to cash flow this project. Fingers crossed.
Even better. Thank you very much. I know we struggled when we were doing our transfer of our OSERS information into the state system that the PeopleSoft just couldn't talk to the state system. On page eight, there was a, or slide eight, rather, there was a really cool chart of all the stuff that we're going to be able to do or we expect to be able to be done when we, I think it was eight. It was eight is what I was thinking, all those different things. Does PeopleSoft do all of those things now, or do we have more than one system now, and therefore we are also achieving having a single system?
So it is likely that we will not have a single system because a single system is rarely good for everything. What we do anticipate happening is that there may be some existing systems that we would be able to discontinue, not all of them, but maybe some of them. And a new system with the integration layer that we're looking at will talk more seamlessly with each other. I'm not an IT guy, so I can't get into that type of information, but I do believe that we will have a single system for the majority of our finance and human resources that will be supplemented with some existing systems that we already have, potentially. We'll have to see what the vendors come back with and what makes sense for us as a district. The goal is not to get to one system entirely, that's soup to nuts, but to get the best combination of systems with one primary system.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions, anybody? Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wakefield and Dr. Nero, thank you for being ready to jump in if necessary. We will now move on to our Budget and Audit Committee update. Ms. Magnusson.
Thank you, President Erdnberger. The Budget and Audit Committee met on June 3. Thank you to Mr. Ryan for presiding, and to my fellow committee members, Mr. Teal and Ms. Snipes, for your participation, as well as the additional admin and staff. and Ms. Snipes, for your participation, as well as the additional admin and staff in attendance to facilitate our discussion. During this meeting on June 3rd, we talked through our meeting format and documentation changes. The meeting format has been largely unchanged for the past six years, so we extended our meetings to allow for more discussion, also extended our runway time to receive documentation for discussion. We'll also see quarterly updates on federal grant financials. Where financials are concerned, we reviewed $67.8 million in federal funding, and I'll pause there for a moment because to me, that's a very large number. $55 million of that, or 81%, is expected to continue with minimal change from the federal government. There is $12.7 million or 19% that we deem to be potentially at risk. We're monitoring that closely. We also had a conversation on equity and budgeting, the considerations we keep in mind when discussing budgeting, such as enrollment, facility size. We talked about how staffing flexibility is limited by workforce shortages and federal rules, and also how student activity fees use a poverty multiplier for equitable distribution. Lastly, we discussed legal expenditures, namely an overview of our legal contract, our services, and administrative oversight of such. We have another meeting coming up in around two weeks. That'll be the 30th. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Ms. Magnusson? Lucky you. Thank you, Ms. Magnusson. Policy Committee update, and we will be moving into an action item as well.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. Policy Committee met for a half-day session on June 12th. Myself, Ms. Full, and Ms. Erdenberger were in attendance, and we also had Ms. Snipes join us at the end of the meeting to talk about Board Workshop. At the Policy Committee meeting, we discussed the 7,000 series, purchasing and contracting, construction manager at risk policy, and care of school property and assets. There are some changes that we expect to be presented to the board. You'll see those as information items in coming board meetings. We discussed policy, it will be policy 5100, it's Behavior Management. This is based on the required policy that's statutorily required based on Nebraska law. We, we were continuing to discuss that. I expect that'll be at a board meeting soon as well. 5301, dress code and grooming. We actually did pass a version of this on second reading, partly in response to time pressures to get our code of conduct completed and also because of the statutory deadline involved with that. That's another statutorily required policy that we have to add, but the committee is revisiting the language of that policy, mostly to work on how it, make sure it integrates better with our other policies and is more consistent with our policies. Eighty, we worked on policy 8230, and essentially, this is the policy regarding attendance at, board member attendance at education workshops, conferences, and training, ultimately deciding that there would be no changes at this time. We discussed cellphone policy for the district. There is now a statutory requirement, and we'd kind of been waiting for this legislative session to end to know where that was going to land, but we also have been discussing in conjunction with that a more general way to address our technology in the district and student use of technology. So we're going to be kind of looking at all of those together. We may pass a cellphone policy in the short term because we have to pass one before the beginning of the next school year, but we want to kind of think about that as holistically, about technology use of students during school day and after. We discussed possibility of changing the process for excused and unexcused absences and how that works in our agenda. We discussed a data policy focusing on, the discussion focused on how, what kinds of reports do we want to see as a board every year and putting that into policy so that we can kind of depend on the cadence, understand the same kind of data every year, get familiar with the most important things that we see as a board. And then, as I mentioned, we also discussed topics for the board retreat, including Ms. Snipes. So that is all I have for the Policy Committee update, and I suppose I'll take any questions on any of those items first.
Ms. Full?
I don't have a question. I just, I don't know if you mentioned the survey that we're going to send out to all the board members?
Yes, I meant to. Thank you. Thank you for that. The discussion on the board retreat, we decided to focus on the Lighthouse Study 8 characteristics of well-functioning school boards, and we wanted to get more input on which one of those we would focus on in this first board workshop. So there'll be an email that is coming out to all of you to give us feedback on which one of those you think we should focus on first. Thank you, Ms. Full.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Moving on to action item, Mr. Tealyn.
This is an item that I, I'm going to have to be reminded now. I had it in my notes, but I think this is the item that we had already.
Brought it, I think.
We brought it as information once. Thank you. We brought it as information once and then pulled it back for further discussion. And the real changes here is we brought, we discussed on information is removing those scheduled letters that go out to families based on absences and adding some language that speaks to some of the more really higher-level communications that we have and supports that we put in place to address when students are chronically absent. So that is on, now on first reading, and that is a committee motion. So on behalf of the committee, I would submit that for discussion and a vote.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5008 regarding attendance. Is there any discussion? Then I guess we'll have a roll call from Dr. McFarland.
Wait, can I, I'm going to ask to amend my motion. I'm going to, I'll amend my motion, and then we can have discussion if that's all right, Nancy? Thank you. I'm also going to ask that we waive second reading on this so that we can get this policy into effect as quickly as possible. We've already had information, so I'm hoping that that's acceptable.
Okay. The motion is to approve the first reading and waive the second reading. Is there any discussion? Ms. Krackey?
I think I just wanted to clarify what I heard you say, but I didn't hear it loud enough because I think it's important. On the attendance, I understand today that we have called five-day, 10-day, 15, and in the future, we will be sending a letter to the home. Is that how we're going to?
A little bit different, actually. So in the past, well, we've done a number of things, but what has been required by policy is that we send letters at those specific date markers.
Right.
We, over the last five years, three years in particular, we have really done a lot more than that, and we've got information systems that allow us to be, to do better than that. So we will be making, we make phone calls, we do text messages, we do infinite campus messages. There are many ways in which we are contacting.
But I want to be sure that we know that everybody is going to be contacted and that it no longer will be the five, the 10, the 15. We're going to get right after, right away.
That's right. That is correct. We will do those things.
Remember, I felt that that I did that in our elementary school. We did it right away. I mean, we made calls, and the office made phone calls, and at lunch, you'd find out, did the office get them or should we call them? And I just think that the idea that we want them there is so important to the home and to the child themselves. And there may be other things that are interfering, and it's very important that we know what those are and so that we can address them because in the past, I know there have been all kinds of ways to address, to get students who really couldn't get there, to do other things. So I just want the public to know that we are behind their attendance, and we really want to help them with their child and their attendance and getting them there. So I really wanted to make a lot of noise about that.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. And to your point, we have been doing a lot of those things for a very long time.
Right.
This policy change is really to recognize that the letters aren't a, you know, primary way that we're doing it anymore and to kind of set that baseline in policy of the new things that we're doing that are better.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
There's no further discussion. I'll call for roll call. Dr. McFarland?
Almanza?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Full?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Magnusson?
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Adye?
Great. Thank you, everybody. Motion passes. Before we move on to receipt of reports, I'm going to hand the microphone over to our superintendent.
Tonight, we approved in staff adjustments the promotion of Langston Fryson as the high school principal supervisor. Langston has been here all night. I felt it was important to recognize him. And then Andrew Carmazin as the middle school principal supervisor. So I want to recognize them both, well, specifically Langston for being here all night. So thank you. And then we can all judge Carmazin later for not being here. So thank you for being here, and congratulations on your new job.
Really exciting.
Thank you.
Could he please stand up? Because we cannot see him behind one of the people.
Stand up, Langston.
I guess you have to stand up too.
Come on, Doc. I would like you to talk to us for a minute and tell us where all you have been.
That's okay. We're going to go right into closed session because we have a long closed session ahead of us.
Yes, thank you very much.
So thank you.
Although I do, per point of personal preference, we do have Langston leaving one of my schools, so bye. Receipt of reports, there's one receipt of report on the agenda tonight, the third-quarter board conference expenses for 2024-25. And Ms. Snipes, will you request a closed session for us?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Lisa Utterback and Legal Counsel, Security, Pending Litigation Personnel, and Legal Advice.
Thank you very much. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Roll call, please, Dr. McFarland.
Aye.
Almanza?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Full?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Magnusson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Excellent. Motion passes. Let me remind the board that the purpose of closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Lisa Utterback, and Legal Counsel, Security, Pending Litigation, Personnel, and Legal Advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:33. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:33.
Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 8:51 and let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 8:52.
Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 8:51 and let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 8:52.